Community housing innovations and several others. We have a number of housing specialists who've worked in this field throughout most of their careers and have been engaged in this question around housing in general and affordable housing. And we're also bringing together faith leaders and community leaders for whom housing is a human right. And they would like to see some advances for the sake of common decency. And again, for the enrichment of our communities. This is a picture of our campaign launch, which took place in June. And in many ways, the building that we're standing in front of is showcasing our vision for what is possible within Westchester County. This is the location in Portchester. It was an auxiliary parking lot for a small strip mall. It's not even the main parking lot. It was a parking lot off to the side. Through the help of some developers, through the help of the Housing Action Council, and through the support of the city of Portchester, it is today 35 units of housing that is specific to seniors, which was a dire need in Portchester as it is in many communities, with everything pegged to affordability for those seniors. So again, it's taking space that is underutilized, that is not delivering the best possible value, either for the folks who want to live there or for the city as a whole, and turning it into beautiful housing. That these types of projects can exist in all of our communities. So why do we need a campaign? Well, we want to have a new conversation around housing, specifically over the fact that housing is fundamental. It is the oxygen for our local economy and for attracting employers who want to make sure that the employees that they're looking to sustain within this region are able to afford living in the region. It's security for our family and it's a difference maker for our kids. The linkage between sustainable housing and kids' performance in school and so many other things that we want to provide for the next generation is without question. We also think that housing is the type of issue where people don't always have it on the top of mind. There are a lot of things competing for their attention, but it's also the key to unlocking many other issues that people and our residents do care about. For example, they care about jobs. They care about the economy. They care about supporting essential workers who got us through this pandemic. If they care about racial justice issues, housing has been at the center of many of those, both in the positive and in the negative. If they care about property taxes and making sure that we are building enough housing, not just for the people who want to live here, but also to help sustain the finances of our school districts and their municipalities is an important part of that equation. And of course, in particular, if you are concerned about climate, then things like transit-oriented developments, things like multifamily, which tends to be much more energy and climate friendly, are things that you're going to want to be engaged in. Many people don't necessarily see the connections and our campaign is looking to have a spotlight on them. But the challenge that we face, particularly when it comes to the systems that determine whether new housing gets built and gets built at an adequate level, is the problem of every reformer, which is that every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets. Often, if there is a gap between what you're expecting and what you're experiencing, oftentimes that gap is on purpose, or at least was designed to achieve that ends when the system was set up. The results in Westchester County today speak for themselves. Most folks are familiar with the Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment and the top levels of that are quite eye-opening in terms of the gap between the housing that we need and the housing that we're producing. The Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment found a need for 82,451 total affordable units. And there's a lot that goes into that category. How dealing with issues of affordability and substandard housing and overcrowding, those who are seeking housing but finding no affordable housing in the present day. But the piece of it that we want to focus on is that included a demand for 11,703 units of new construction. And keep in mind that this report came out in 2019 before the real estate market here in Westchester County was supercharged by the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly from people looking to migrate out of New York City. What do we mean when we mean affordable? Well, oftentimes we're meaning the exact types of people that we valorize in other contexts, particularly related to the pandemic. From social workers to program managers to community health workers to nurses. These are folks who make a solid middle-class salary. But as the Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment demonstrated, are finding extremely few affordable options, either to rent or to own in the present-day Westchester County. In addition to that, there are other red flags. The Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment demonstrated that the demographics that were shrinking over a 10-year time period within Westchester County were the folks on the top, young families who have traditionally been the lifeblood and replenishing for this region. That cohort has actually declined over the past 10 years. In exchange, the cohort that is moving up are seniors, particularly those who are older than the age of 84. That population has dramatically increased over the past 10 years. And with them come different needs, particularly the needs to perhaps downsize the places that they're living into and finding not a lot of affordable options for that either. What do we need at the end of the day? Well, we need everything and that means we need affordable workforce housing, middle-income housing, senior housing, housing for millennials, housing near mass transit, housing for those with disabilities, supportive housing, market rate housing, you name it. We need a little bit of everything. Not every community, of course, will be able to carry the burden or the weight by themselves, but all of us can look at what we're doing and try and make it a little bit more streamlined and a little bit more friendly towards building the housing that we need. And that's why we released our first white paper last week, the economic benefits of building the housing that we need. And I'd like to take you through the top-line things that our exhaustive research found. First of all, we wanted to reinforce the notion that just because a developer, who is typically a for-profit company, is expecting to get a rate of return, that it doesn't necessarily follow that the community is not going to be included in that return. They certainly are. Every economic model from the 1990s to the present day finds that when communities allow for the building of new housing, particularly multifamily construction, the benefits speak for themselves. The first of which is, of course, local jobs. The construction phase for 100 units of multifamily construction, on average, tends to deliver about 161 local jobs. And with that comes income into the local economy with $11.7 million. But in addition to that, once the construction is built, there are recurring annual impacts. Once that housing is built and it is populated, there are service jobs to service those new residents. And that's why the studies from NAHB and others find that there is 44 local jobs on an annual basis just from creating that housing. And with that comes additional income to the local economy of $2.6 million every year. But it doesn't stop there. One of the things that we look for in terms of infrastructure projects that are a benefit to their community is the multiplier effect. And one of the things that has been found in numerous economic studies outlined in our paper is that the multiplier effect, the economic benefit that can be accrued from a modest investment, is actually higher for multifamily housing and housing construction in general than it is for almost any other type of infrastructure project, including highways and streets. And the reason for that begins with the fact that it generates more full-time jobs than those other types of infrastructure projects. When you add it all together, of course, there is a ledger, there's a plus and there's a minus. There is plus for the local community in terms of the taxes and the revenue for local governments. But then, of course, you do have to provide services for those new residents. And in some cases, you have to provide so many services for those new residents that you might need to make more capital investments, an extra police cruiser or an extra firehouse, or you name it. However, even taking all of that into account, we find that the first-year impact, the net result for local governments, when you're comparing the tax and revenue for local governments to what it's spending out, even assuming all those capital investments are made in the first year, winds up being net positive in study after study. The first-year impacts are net positive. And then, of course, that means we also see an additional recurring annual impact year after year. That's tax and revenue that is going into local governments, that is going into municipalities in Westchester County, addressing a need in terms of building housing. That is truly the definition of win-win. Let's look at this from a topic that is often a controversial one, which is the question of what it's doing on school enrollment, specifically within the context of Westchester County's excellent schools. They are the pride and the gem of many of the towns and villages within Westchester County. Typically speaking, there is a concern that if you build multifamily housing specifically or any type of large multifamily housing, that you will see a surge in schoolchildren that could have dire effects for the school district. There is not empirical evidence behind this assertion. And in fact, nearly every study that we've been able to see from Harvard University on downward finds the exact opposite to be true, that in fact, single-family housing, the default for most of our communities here in Westchester County, is much more likely to generate school enrollment at a higher level than multifamily. As you can see from our chart, that is true with existing single-family and that is especially true for newly-built single-family versus newly-built multifamily. Well, why might that be the case? Well, if you think about it, most people who are migrating to a Westchester County town or village or city specifically looking for the schools are looking to raise a family and looking for room to raise a family. The market for those who are interested in multifamily in particular tends to be quite different. You see a lot more millennials. You see a lot more young couples who are not quite ready to raise their family. You see a lot more folks who have specific challenges, for example, like disabilities. You see a lot more seniors who are looking to downsize. So the net effect of school enrollment in multifamily in Westchester County, as well as elsewhere, tends to be much lower than certainly that of single-family. And with that, it should be said, comes a net positive, a net surplus for most school districts where there's been an increase in multifamily building. In fact, a study came out just this year that looked very specifically at seven communities on Long Island, very comparable in terms of population, in terms of average income and so on and so forth, to many of our communities here in Westchester County, who had built at least 150 units within a mile of mass transit since 2012. So they're looking backwards at what actually happened within these buildings. And the results confirm what most of the models upfront would have predicted. Some communities saw a net decline in enrollment, even after these buildings of 150 units or more were already built and occupied. And even for school districts where there was a net gain in enrollment, new construction accounted only for about 20% of the new students over that time period. The rest of the 80% was the much more typical, what we would expect in terms of the churn between families who are departing from their single-family homes or whatever they're doing to make way for an influx of new families and new students. So the multifamily itself had a relatively negative impact, sorry, relatively negligible impact on the net gain in enrollment. More importantly, for all the districts included within the study on Long Island, each school district, whether they had new students or not, saw a net surplus in school property taxes from the new construction. And again, most of the units are not being occupied by school-aged children. So you would expect to see this. The lowest surplus was about $54,920 for the 2020-2021 school year. And the highest surplus was nearly three-quarters of a million dollars, where some of these 150-plus unit buildings have been built on Long Island. They took special attention to look at Huntington School District, which had the most students from any single housing development. They had 56 students in a 303-unit building. They more or less hit what the developer had anticipated or would be occupying that building in terms of school enrollment. But number one, overall enrollment in the school district over that same time actually declined. And yes, they also saw a net surplus in school taxes for the 2020-2021 year, even though they had the most students enrolling. So when you actually start to do a deep dive into the numbers, when you look back at what has actually happened versus what is predicted by the models, you actually see these winds up being a good deal for existing residents, because this is proper taxes that they don't need to make up. And it winds up being obviously a very good deal for new residents. We're looking for something that they can affordably inhabit within Westchester County and winds up being a good deal for the municipality and the school district as well. And this is particularly true here in Westchester County, because one area where we're not doing very good is in terms of filling our existing commercial space. There has been a noticeable decline of 15% over the past 10 years, specifically within office commercial space here in Westchester County. And that's even taking into account the number of buildings that have simply gone offline, where the owner of the building just stopped renting it out anymore because they weren't able to get capacity. We're seeing this quite a lot along 287. We're seeing it in lots of different communities where there's manufacturing plant or an office building that hasn't been above 50% capacity in a long period of time. Or something else where the building needs to be repurposed. It's sitting there, there are property taxes being collected on the land, but it's not really serving the needs of the community. It's not particularly generating any type of revenue and it's certainly not bringing any of the social positives that building the housing that we need, which we know helps in so many different factors, could bring. So finally, I just want to conclude, as we always do, with four policy recommendations. We just want to put these out there as potential ideas that you can consider whether they make sense within the context of your own community. The first thing that we would like to do is require Land Use Board volunteers to be familiar with a couple of basic items that we really think is informing the housing discussion in this day and age. And no, we didn't write either one of them. The first is, of course, the Housing Needs Assessment profile for your community. There is a treasure trove of information and it is specific to the town of Austining as committed within the Housing Needs Assessment. And it's looking not necessarily at what you need, but at who lives there now? How are they dealing with in terms of being able to afford places to rent? In terms of being able to fill, to afford places to own? Where are the gaps? How is the population changing? Of course, a lot of the time on land use boards, and I know because I was a volunteer on one for myself for a number of years, we spend a lot of time talking about the land and we talk about the buildings. And the building is important, but the people who are going to live in the building is essential. And the Housing Needs Assessment data is critical to understanding that within our own communities. And then the second area, which is something that hadn't even been talked about that much as recently as five years ago, but is much more prominently in the news, particularly as people are re-examining the ends of the systems that are creating, particularly in terms of racial justice. It is worth looking at texts like "The Color of Law" by Richard Rothstein and others to look at the historical linkage between zoning and racial segregation and exclusion. Not because we're in any way suggesting that the people who are on land use boards hold the same views as the people who are creating some of these systems in the 1960s held, but simply because, as we said, every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets. And it's worth taking a look at what is actually being generated by some of the decisions that we're making, particularly around housing. Do they reflect the values that we hold today? Number two is, of course, reexamine old inadequate or exclusionary zoning, particularly involving parking requirements, requirements that inhibit the adoption of energy-efficient or alternative energy sources. There is more and more discussion about whether our current zoning codes reflect the future that we see ahead of us, particularly from the point of view of climate resiliency and the need to decarbonize our communities. And having that conversation sooner rather than later seems quite prudent. Number three, troubleshoot the approvals process to make it more predictable in terms of timelines for high-value projects. And here, in terms of high-value projects, I would say it's up to each community to determine what it wants to produce more of. But there are certain things that perhaps ought not to take so long through the approvals process. This includes projects that don't require a variance, although oftentimes there was some scrutiny. In some communities, that scrutiny can be excessive. Projects with a projected positive impact, local property taxes or school taxes, in exchange for being able to demonstrate some real progress in these areas, perhaps some look at the timeline that is being spent on those projects to encourage more things that are net positive in terms of property taxes or school taxes. Projects that will exceed the standard 10% affordability set-asides. One of the reasons why many developers are a little gun-shy to look at things like multifamily, that would have a 20% affordability set aside, because they simply don't know how long the full public review process will take. So in exchange for a higher level of affordability, they may be willing to trade some certainty in terms of timeline and et cetera. And our last suggestion is after a certain threshold of units have been built, we would encourage communities to run after-action reviews to evaluate projections and create institutional memory. That's specifically taken directly from what the project that they ran on Long Island, to look at what actually did happen after all of these 150-plus unit buildings were created. And that's looking at school enrollment. But it's worthwhile taking a look at aggregate property taxes and school taxes. It's worth taking a look at when the application made certain secret commitments. How did it fulfill it and so on and so forth? It's worth mentioning that there are some communities, for example, Seattle, that are looking specifically at questions of displacement, at questions of gentrification and concerns along those lines after a number of units have been built. And so in some communities, that might be a natural place for an after-action as well. So that is a very, very quick summary on our paper. And we're planning to do and deliver a lot more research and have a much lengthier conversation in a lot of different communities. But I certainly want to stop now. I don't know if there is time for questions or if that's better left to a follow-up, because I know you do have a busy agenda tonight, so I leave it to Gareth.
Well, thank you very much, Tim. That was a fascinating and perfectly timed presentation. I think we do have a few minutes for questions. So anyone who would like to ask, feel free. This includes the public, anyone online?
And I did talk fast, so if anyone needs me to repeat anything, I'm happy to.
While other people are thinking, I have one question. So I like the idea of the after-action reviews. You know, that costs money. And I'm wondering if there are any granting agencies that that provide funding for such after-action reviews?
That's a wonderful question. I'm not myself sure about which would be the most logical places to apply. I can say we're actually in the process ourselves of running one of these for a few different communities. And I can say it's not as expensive as you might think, although I know within a municipal budget, every dollar is pretty tight. I suspect that there might be partnerships that are available. And particularly if it's the sort of thing where Westchester County has been such a champion in terms of trying to get communities to understand and implement some of the recommendations within their Housing Needs Assessment, there may be a natural link up there within a budget cycle. The last thing that's just worth mentioning is that this seems to be changing every day. But the Build Back Better bill that's currently being debated in Congress does itself contain funding for communities that specifically tie to a reexamination of some of their zoning. The exact language, of course, appears to be shifting minute to minute. But that means that there may, at some point in the near future, be some federal funding that might be available for communities that are looking to possibly examine and streamline some of their zoning code.
Are there any other questions from anyone online?
Yeah, Tim, I just, you touched on it briefly, but I wanted to know if you had some more information about, you talked about the predictability of the approval process and perhaps even the shortening of the approval process under certain circumstances. And I wonder if you have any more information on that.
Well, the most important thing that I can say about that is, as with any business, builders and developers respond to market signals, meaning that if you make it particularly easy to build one type of thing, they will build that one type of thing. That is why particularly in so many communities within Westchester County, you see so many single-family home tear-downs. You see so many McMansions being built, so on and so forth, because it's comparatively easy and oftentimes as of right to build such things. Things that require a lengthier review process, you start to get into a little area of uncertainty in terms of what the costs are. Because remember, every time someone comes before you with an application, they have a whole team of consultants that not only are here to present the application, but have gone into extensive prep with them or they've modified their agreement, their application, or they're looking at this thing or the other thing. All of that is time, all of that is time being paid to a consultant. So that ultimately starts to change what particularly is brought before you in terms of an application and therefore what gets built. So one of the things that makes sense in other contexts within government is to essentially say, if you are in the process of building something that we need, let's say it's affordable housing, or let's say it's net-zero housing, where you're actually going to bring forward something that is going to be so energy-efficient that it's going to be at acceptable net-zero standards, because climate resilience is important to you. Or where it's something where 10% is the affordability you're looking for, but they're willing to go higher to 20 or 25, or in some cases even higher than that, that in exchange, you would say, we'll do a pre-application conference with you and we will do our best to try and hold to a schedule in which this approval may take months, rather than in some cases, years. And again, I'm not referring to any application in specific. I'm talking very much in generalities. One of the things that I often hear from builders and developers is in particular communities, they can have a perfectly good project, which they think they've worked out all the angles, but it can still take one or two years, even if they're not asking for a variance to go from start to finish throughout the approvals process. Sometimes that makes sense financially and sometimes it doesn't. And sometimes the community leaves out because, you know, 20, 30, 40 units of affordable housing don't get built as a direct response.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, I have another one. Actually, two. One is, you mentioned the Housing Needs Assessment in Westchester County, but you also hinted that there might be community-by-community breakouts. So is there information on the, or was there an assessment done of the Austining Housing Needs?
Absolutely, and this keys up perfectly why that's our top recommendation is to have particularly, Land Use Board volunteers are required to do four hours of training typically. And we think that in some ways, there ought to be a couple of required texts and the Housing Needs Assessment profile workup for your specific community, we feel ought to be a required text. It is an appendix. They go through all the towns, all the villages and all the cities. And there's several pages worth of data looking specifically at who lives there, what age cohorts there are, what's their ability to afford an average one-bedroom apartment based on the salary that they make? How many people are living in poverty by various different metrics? And again, it doesn't get necessarily to the question of how much housing is enough for a particular community, but it gives a vast insight into who is living within the community already and who is struggling to stay in the community from a financial point of view. So the Westchester County Housing Needs Assessment is, as I said, it is chock-full of information. It has an entire appendix devoted to policy as an entire municipal, municipality-by-municipality review of that information. It also includes an appendix that is simply on free or low-cost suggestions for ways to promote the building of housing within Westchester County. So I cannot recommend it enough. I review it myself about every three or four months because it is a giant document and there's always some part that I forget is in there. But specifically looking at the municipal profile, I would think is very important.
And Gareth, I have a copy sitting in my office. If you want me to see about getting copies for everybody, let me know.
I have, I have, I have electronic copy I can just send everybody.
That would be terrific. Great, we'll stick with the electronic copy for now. But don't be surprised if I have to borrow someone's hard copy as well.
Well, I'll just, I'll send you the main document and then the town of Austining.
Great, great. If there were no other questions, I have one last one. And that is if new And that is if you or the Building Institute or the Welcome Home Westchester is looking for case studies. It would be, I think we in the town of Austining would welcome you to come look at some of our past projects. And compare what our projections were in terms of, you know, taxes and school kids and so forth to what actually happened. This is always on our mind, and it's certainly always on the minds of the of the community members who come to our meetings. And we would welcome any, you know, local, you know, locally specific data to be generated, so.
Absolutely, that's a wonderful idea, and I'm sure we'll take you up on it.
Great. So again, I'd like to thank you, Tim, for coming tonight. It was a great talk. I'm so glad to know about the work of your group. And thank you. We'll we'll be in touch another time.
Thank you all again.
Thank you so much, Tim, and when the next white paper comes out, maybe you can come back.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So let's move on then to the first agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, we need to just do one little housekeeping item dealing with November 3rd. November 3rd wasn't identified as a planning board meeting, but we're suggesting that we have that as a work session, and we just wanted to make sure the board can attend November 3rd as a work session.
So let's go through all the members of the board in order on my screen. Carolyn, does that work for you?
Yes, I can do November 3rd. I will say that that I may not be able to make the November 7th, I think it's November 17th board meeting. So I just want to give you a heads up now, that'll be the middle of our budget process at the county, and we often have nighttime meetings. So I may not be available for that, so I wanted to make sure that Jesus or whoever is, you know, filling in can be there, that's all.
Jim, November 3rd?
Amen.
Great. Donna?
Looks good for me.
Great, and it looks good for me as well. So and perhaps Sandy, you could contact Jesus, see him online. See if that works.
I will.
Great, okay, good. And we'll, we'll, I think we have a specific concept in mind for that night, which we'll talk about later on in the agenda.
Yes, just to explain, the reason why I needed to double check on that is because all applications that get adjourned tonight will get adjourned to October 20th. And then ultimately will get adjourned to November 17. But if for some reason we weren't able to meet on November 3rd, we were going to have to have the work session on October 20th, which was the reason why we need to double check that. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so we would like to address the Rinaldi subdivision now, 39 Stormy Town Road. And I believe Chuck, the speaking for the applicant is online.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
This is a continuation of hearing. Oh, could I ask everyone to put their mics on mute? We're getting some feedback. Jim, I see you're not, and okay, great, that's much better, thanks. So Chuck, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Chuck, at your thing in engineering. We were before the town board a week or so ago, asking if the town board would consider taking over ownership and maintenance responsibilities in the road in the subdivision based on a series of conditions. They passed a resolution saying that, assuming that all the things that are required as conditions get done, they would consider that taking over the road as a public tree. We have agreed to all of the comments that were discussed at the last meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that there's anything else for the applicant to add at this time.
Okay, thank you. Consultants, Valerie?
Okay, I'm mute. So the board has, I don't have any other comments on this, on the subdivision application itself. There is a draft resolution for the board to consider for tonight's meeting if it so chooses.
Okay, Kathy, anything right now?
No. I reviewed the, I just had a few little comments on the draft resolution that were incorporated.
Okay, Dan?
We're satisfied with the subdivision also. I just have one comment on the resolution. It makes reference to the village engineer. I assume you meant me. But otherwise, we're good to go.
Okay. Any comments from the board members?
I have a question. So since the town is not taking over the storm stormwater infiltration, whatever that's called. How's that going to be maintained? Is that, is that been presented to us? So, and I also did not get the resolution. I lost all my email when something happened with the town, so I don't have any of the past emails. So I don't know if you sent that before then, but I didn't get a copy of that resolution.
No, everything was sent this week.
I didn't see it. Okay, but so my question is about that HOA, and also for Dan, when Dan was discussing the stormwater the criterias, I'm wondering when that last was updated? When, when the, like, the 100 year storm, all those all those assessments, when was that last updated? Because we did get six inches, six and a half inches of rain, but in New Jersey, very close to us, they got 12 inches. So.
Yeah, I mean, that that's the the 100 year storm that the we're to design to, and that's dictated by the New York State D E C. And the 100 year storm is about nine inches, and we were less than that.
When was that updated?
It was updated, I think the last time that document was published, I think the latest version is about five years old.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, storm like that, I mean, it really has to be a real shift for them to to change that, but they do check, you know, they do track weather data, and if necessary, the, in the future, those storms may be increased, but at this point, you know, I don't know that we can ask this applicant to do something other than what the the D E C requires them to do.
Understood. So what about the, is there going to be an HOA, and how's that going to be maintained?
So it is addressed, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay, no, it is addressed in the resolution.
All right.
You could see in 2B, it's one of the general conditions that we're proposing that there be a stormwater maintenance agreement that is going to be executed, filed and recorded with the Westchester County. So it'll be something that's binding on all the, on the property, all the lots.
And a question I had the other day, which got answered through an email was, would the town have the right to inspect anytime they wanted, and that will be part of the maintenance agreement? So to the extent useful, you know, that'll be in there.
Right, it has to be in a form acceptable to the planning board attorney, and usually that's that's typical language that I would want to include in there. Also, the right, but not the obligation for the town to do it and bill it back to the property owner through so that there's a mechanism that it gets done.
Any other comments from the board members on the resolution or the project itself?
Well, I did not read the resolution because I I didn't see it in my email, so I don't know if I if I didn't get it. If I did get it, it just got, I don't know, I looked at all my emails.
Did you get any emails from me this week?
I got, I would have, I can't do it here. I'm on the computer, so I can't look at it. I think I got something from you about that webinar. I got that.
Okay, well, we'll have to check your emails then.
It was today at 3:23.
It's the updated one, right?
The resolution came today at 3:23?
Yes.
There were prior versions, that was just.
Yes, just the, just the last, in the most recent one.
We could, if we wanted to act on it, we could take the time to read it. Read it aloud. What are your thoughts on that, Valerie?
Maybe we could just share, one of us, Valerie or I could share our screen and kind of just go through it quickly.
Okay, would would the board members find that adequate? Okay, Donna, okay, that's, that's great. Go ahead, please, Kathy or Valerie.
Or I can, let me, yeah, I can do it, hold on. Okay. Hold on a second. Can you see it?
Yes.
And I'm going to make it bigger, hold on. So the first paragraph just basically identifies the project and the scope of the project, which everyone's familiar with. And it's the subdivision of nine lots. The second paragraph discusses the negative declaration that was issued on October 2nd, 2019. We related to this project. The third paragraph talks about its referral to Westchester County Department of Planning for Review and Comments. The fourth paragraph discusses the public hearing and when it was opened and when it was closed. And then the fifth paragraph identifies the various documents that have been reviewed for this particular submission. The fifth and sixth paragraph, I mean, the sixth and seventh paragraph to discuss what the board has reviewed, including, you know, letters, reports, memorandum from the board's consultants, as well as the public, the public comments that were provided at the public hearing. And and it also acknowledges that the applicant appeared before the town board to request the dedication of a new road to be constructed. And that the town board passed a resolution stating that the board's intention to accept upon fulfillment of specified conditions and offer dedication of the internal road in order to ensure appropriate maintenance and repairs to the roads that it remains in satisfactory condition over the long term. So the board's determination specifically looks at Chapter 167 subdivision of land. You're acknowledging that it's consistent with the spirit intent of the chapter, and you are acknowledging that a waiver from Section 17615A, the installation of sidewalks and light fixtures on your streets are being waived because they will be included on Stormy Town Road, or the sidewalks will be included on Stormy Town Road. Also, that you're acknowledging or you're identifying that there is a proper case exists for requiring that a park be suitably located. And that you're finding that there is no space currently on the proposed project to include that parkland. So this just lays out the arguments as to the, your findings, and then number three identifies the fees that would be required in lieu of providing parkland, which is 7,500 per lot and 2,500 per affordable housing unit. Then you're also acknowledging that the, this particular application must provide one below market rate unit in accordance with your affordable housing regulations. And then also that the planning board is is determining that based upon the findings set forth below, that the final subdivision plot is proved granted to the following conditions. One, that the applicant must, you know, undertake the subdivision specifically relating to how the plans were presented from the last revised, which was August 9th, 2021. And the general conditions specifically are dealing with the applicant must address the full satisfaction of the town engineer, outstanding stormwater maintenance agreements, easements, and engineering issues raised in hearings and documents. That the, to the full satisfaction of the planning board attorney, a stormwater maintenance agreement shall be prepared by the applicant in a form acceptable to the planning board attorney and shall be executed, filed and recorded within Westchester County. And a reference to the stormwater maintenance agreement shall be noted on the final subdivision plot. The final subdivision plot must be prepared by a licensed engineer. Excuse me, licensed land surveyor. And the subdivision plot shall be endorsed by Westchester County Department of Health. The applicant shall submit a letter from the Village of Austining, which confirms confirms the adequacy of the new water. The applicant shall submit a statement signed by the town receiver taxes that all taxes due on the subject property have been paid. The applicant will post a performance bond as required in Section 176882 of the subdivision of land chapter. And the applicant shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees. Then specific specific conditions are that the applicant must meet the requirements of Section 18312G of the Tree Protection Chapter of the Town Code. And the applicant may propose a replacement of trees or payments into the tree fund. You know, clearly, this, the applicant has already submitted their landscaping plan, and right now, we, you know, based on the plans that they do meet the tree protection chapter, however, this also adds an extra layer of protection in case the landscaping plan is not installed as identified on the plans. The landscaping plan shall also be revised, that the applicant will preserve the following trees, and these are the four trees that were bred upon last month. And that the existing vegetative screening on site shall be maintained, and if the existing screening is damaged or dies, the applicant needs to replace the vegetative screening. All replacement and landscaping shall be installed in a healthy and vigorous state, and shall be inspected at the end of the growing season within the first, second and third year. And then individual species that do not survive beyond the first, second and third year shall be replaced. And then also in accordance with the Affordable Housing Law, that there must be a full satisfaction to the town attorney, and de-restriction shall be prepared by the applicant in a form acceptable to the town attorney and shall be executed and filed and recorded in Westchester County. And then the last three are just force and effect, just sort of identifying when these, when the plots have to be, plots have to be signed. The recreation fee, again, as we discussed prior, and field changes, that modifications are allowed. Some modifications are allowed based upon certain time limits and applicable fees. And then also dedication of town road. The applicant must complete all conditions in the September 28th, 2021 town board resolution part or any acceptance of the town road, and the town board is under no obligation to consider an offer of dedication until all such conditions are met. The expiration of final subdivision approval resolution will expire 180 days after this resolution unless all requirements stated herein have been completed. And then the filing of subdivision plot in accordance with town law, any final subdivision plot not filed or recorded within 62 days of the date upon which such plot is endorsed by the planning board chair shall expire. Kathy, did you have anything else you wanted to highlight?
No.
Okay, question?
Yeah, I want to hear about Sony Plage. I know you don't care, but I do.
I'm sorry, are we speaking there?
I think they just muted.
For us.
So I did have a question.
Go ahead, Donna, please.
So I'm just curious, when, when it says that there, that the trees would be inspected after the first, second and third growing season? Who's, who does that, and, and that, and what? So I'm going through that with the project behind me, that is So I'm going through that with the project behind me, um, that is not maintained at all. And I'm I'm wondering, like, what trigger is there to get these this these plantings um, inspected after the first, second, and third year? Like, how's that gonna happen?
Well, right now, the obligation is for the um, for the property owner or the, you know, the applicant to maintain, to make sure that takes place.
So and then if they don't, what, there will be no one else monitoring it? It's just the
No, I mean, it would be, there'd be in violation of the approval and it'd be an enforcement proceeding then, or, you know.
How would you find out that they were, if there's nobody from the town going and looking? Like, how would they? It would require someone to file a complaint or something? Is that what it is? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I mean, it can have somebody go out to the site and take a look at the site after the first, second, and third year.
Well, I think that would be appropriate because they're taking all the trees down off of this off this slope and um, putting in trees. It's really important that those trees succeed. So I mean, I I think that there should be some formal inspection.
So should we add that as a condition, that there'll be inspection after the first, second, and third growing season?
By the tree warden. Uh, that would be, that would be good.
I I like that idea. Any other thoughts on on that? Jim, Carolyn, you you good with that?
Yes, that seems like a good idea.
Jim?
And and is there a typical protocol here, or are we creating?
The protocol right now is the property behind me has not done anything for their what, the landscape plan they were supposed to. It's completely, uh,
Well, actually, that they um, they do have somebody that comes out, and they have somebody that's trying to finalize a report from a July inspection.
All right, that'll be good. It's pretty disaster.
I think they're they're right now, they have a little bit of an issue about um, getting back in the wetland area because of concerns from a neighbor that they said they heard um, property trespassing concern. So we have, we'll have to deal with finished dealing with that.
On their own property? That's crazy.
And they said that that a neighbor came out and told them that they weren't allowed, you know, so but we have to deal with that.
Okay.
That's not gonna matter.
All right, well, it's um, it would be good because um, to get this, I think it would be really important to have a formal inspection after the first, second, and third year.
Well, I I think that's a very good idea, and that they would have to send uh, the report to the building department, I guess. After each of those, the end of each of those three years.
Are we assuming three years from the start date of the first house?
When does the planting happen?
So you would, since the the house building is going to be most likely staged. Uh, you would think that it should be for, you know, starting with the the first year of each house. Yeah, I mean, if there was nine how, ten houses over, you know, five years. You know, I would think they would have to be staged out that way appropriately. Otherwise, if we just start the count in the first year, you know, and only half of the buildings are are built at the end of the third year, then then it's useless. So I think it should go with each with the building of a house on each property.
So can I ask, is all the trees gonna come down at at once in the beginning when they're putting the road up and all? Or is that, is that the trees come down it for each house, you know, like different times for each house? Because I mean, that would be a problem if you're taking all the trees off those slopes and then not planting for many years.
I I I would interject that I would expect the um, uh, the developers to follow a protocol for erosion control and uh, you know, construction site control. You know, I I think that's pretty standard. Um, I would think that that would be adequate, but anyone want to comment on that? Who who knows?
I I would assume they wouldn't just clear the whole entire site. They're gonna work on, I mean, maybe clear the road, obviously. But then clear the each into, they're gonna develop the lot separately, right, and build the home separately. So they'll pull down the trees associated with each lot. And, you know, just thinking through the timing, maybe you want to have the three years run from the issuance of the C O, right? So the C O marks that everything is in compliance and that the plantings have been there, and then you want to do the So at that point, the construction's done, the plantings are in, so you do the three growing seasons after each C O. Does that make sense? Is that is that, Valerie?
Donna, that sound good to you?
I mean, does that, I mean, Chuck, does that work for, you know, you would know the construction scheduling better?
No. I mean, you have, you potentially have a situation where um, so so one, the developer is obligated to disturb no more than five acres in accordance with the stormwater pollution prevention plan that we've submitted. There'd be a need to create the stormwater management basin and the road as part of the initial development. So that has to be cleared, and whatever transitional grading goes on in that point forward in order to allow that to happen. Many developers would like to go in and clear the building pads so that prospective buyers can look and see what a what a lot might look like before they build a house on it. This developer has not decided what he's gonna do with that approach. I think tying it to the C O is extends the timeframe out pretty far because it's potentially that that the developer will go in and and feel like this, the owner's aspect of this planting plan needs to be dealt with and out of the way. So he may go in and plant all this material right up front, and want to start the warranty period from the time it's installed and inspected to be in compliance with the plan. So the compliance is the installation of a viable plant to start the one, the warranty period. That to to, I could plant material on a lot and not build the house for another three years. That doesn't seem to be reason why. I would like the warranty period to start from the time it's inspected, then saying this meets the intent of the plan, if we could do it that way.
Well, that sounds, if you're putting all the plants in, that would sound reasonable to me.
Uh, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that the warranty period start at the point at which the plants go in. That's what I would ask for.
Then you would have the obligation then to, you know, because they it might not be done all at the same time. So there to be some obligation on the developer to advise when the plantings go in. So the timing can start from that period of time.
Sure, it would be, it would be only, it would be to our benefit to make sure that we keep the 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 municipality advised of the planting schedule. So if we we build a one house and we plant it all, we would ask to come out and inspect it and say, these are the trees that were shown on the approved landscape plan for this lot. Are they okay? We start the warranty period, and it's, it would be our obligation to to keep track of that for you. Because if we don't, then you can just say, well, you didn't tell us when you planted it, so we're gonna start it from the time we did our inspection. So so the owner's balls on us to to be proactive in this process.
So on a lot by lot basis, you will inform the town that the planting is complete, come inspect it. And that that starts the trigger for that lot.
So it's not even by a lot by lot basis, because I could see a developer wanting to come in here and plant all the perimeter trees around the property to create the screening, right? So we may say, all these trees are planted, and we would give you a document that says, you know, your arborist inspected them on January one. These are the trees on the plan. We want the warranty period for these to start. Some of the trees that we're planting as part of our mitigation are not necessarily foundation plants, but within the context of a yard. Which we wouldn't want to plant until we know what kind of house they're gonna build. So I think there's a variety of things that could happen. But it seems to me, as long as we notify you and you inspect them and are satisfied that they're installed properly, right? That the trees that we installed have a start date to them, and I have to keep a map and a record so that you can validate that at any point in time.
So you would provide a map and a record at each of those points?
Yes. That's really what I could keep track of. Otherwise, I have to live with a condition that's tied to a C O or some other, you know, step. Because otherwise, there's no way to keep track of it. I don't, can't expect you, you or the building department to be the one keeping track of it. We'll have to do that.
Donna?
Sounds very reasonable.
Okay, and it has the advantage of possibly getting those trees in earlier and and stabilizing the site. So um, Kathy, Valerie, does that work for you?
I mean, I had to just suggested the C O C O as a, because I didn't want the obligation to be on, you know, the town to have to know when things are being installed. But this sounds very reasonable. If the obligation's gonna be on the developer to advise when when it's gonna be installed, then that's fine.
Maybe I'll add to the resolution that the uh, the applicant will advise the town as to the installation of the trees. And the true, and the uh, three-year period will run with the installation of the trees.
Inspection.
Inspection, yeah.
The installation.
Yeah.
And that it may happen at different times for for different trees.
Yeah.
For different sets of trees.
You know, it's very likely that the trees along the road, for example, we want to plant when we do the road. The trees that are around the detention base, we want to plant when we do the detention base. So there'll be a progress, you know, progression of this. That makes sense, and I think
I know it. What you're proposing makes better sense.
It puts you on the side of the developer a little bit, but it it it's actually better in the long run for us, because we can you know, maybe the maybe the the final statement to that condition is, or the C O, whichever happens first. That way you know there's a date certain that it has to start.
Yeah, that's that's a good suggestion. I feel comfortable with that, because then there's an outside date.
Is there any other comments from the board? Uh, if not, um, can I ask Valerie and Kathy subject to uh, the conditions uh, that we we just spoke of, of being added to the resolution? Uh, would we be in a position to um, end the public hearing and and act on this application tonight?
Yes.
So uh, with that in mind, do uh, do I have a motion to?
Is there anybody from the public?
Do you want to ask if there's anybody?
I'm sorry, yes. Uh, this is still a public hearing. Uh, so are there any members of the community that would like to speak to this application? Not seeing anyone, and thank you for the reminder. So um, do I have a motion to uh, end the public hearing then?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Uh, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the public hearing is closed. And uh, do I have a motion to uh, accept, uh, I guess, to approve the application uh, subject to this resolution? Is, would that be the proper wording, Kathy, for this motion that I'm seeking?
A motion to um, approve the resolution as modified.
Uh.
I'll move to approve the resolution as modified by our discussion this evening.
I'll second.
Uh, Donna, how do you vote?
So I would just like to say, I'm gonna vote yes, but I would like to, first of all, thank the developer for, um, or the applicant for making um, so many changes um, that I requested. Um, I certainly wanted more. Um, but um, I'm, I think, I think that we definitely went a long way, so I thank you very much for that. I am concerned about the nine inches. Um, I think that the future is gonna be kind of crazy, but um, I wish you luck, and um, I'm hoping that um, I'm 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 looking forward to a beautiful development. So my vote is yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And my vote is yes as well. And with that, uh, what would be the next step, Kathy, Valerie?
Um, we're finished.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. So with that, uh, do you have any parting thoughts, Chuck?
Oh, but an interesting process. Um, I hope it turns out the way you expected it to.
Okay, well, thank you, and I too. Thank you for your patience.
Good luck.
And good luck. So uh, moving on to the next agenda item. Uh, we have the Capasso uh, application regarding thirty-four McCarthy Drive. It's an application for single uh, family residence. And is the applicant uh, on? David Capasso, I see you. And will you be speaking for your um, the architect tonight?
I know, our Arctic Bill is on as well.
Okay, great.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Um, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So since it's a public hearing, I guess I'll go through the project and describe it briefly for everyone. So our project, and I'm gonna share the screen as well. Hmm, sure. Yeah, so our project is a a new home. And it's located at the end of McCarthy Drive on a vacant lot. The lot is an existing seventeen, just over seventeen thousand square feet. Uh, it's undersized by roughly three thousand, and we did receive a variance back in November, I believe. And what we're proposing is a new single-family home, two-story situated right here in this outline, facing west towards the river. It's a four-bedroom house. I'll quickly go over the uh, floor plans for the public. So it's gonna be a house with a front entry porch. As you come in, there'll be a foyer, a formal dining room to the left. Uh, David's office to the right with a full bath on the first floor. And then as you pass through the foyer, there'll be a open stair going up to the second floor, which opens up to the uh, not two-story, but cathedral uh, family or great room. That is also open to family dining and kitchen towards the left with a two-car garage and a mudroom access over here. Um, this is a little, we'll call it flex room. It's gonna be where the kids hang out and do their homework, hopefully, or play. Upstairs is, as I mentioned, four bedrooms. There'll be two boys' bedrooms facing the rear with a shared back hall bath and a laundry area adjacent. And facing the front will be the girls' bedroom with a private bathroom and a window seat here overlooking the river. And to the right will be the master suite with his and hers walk-in closets and a full bathroom for them. The front of the house facing MacArthur would, McCarthy, sorry. It would look like this, where the porch wall underneath the front porch, which will be a metal roof will be wrapped in stone, as will the apron along the bottom. It's gonna be a vinyl siding home. I believe there, you guys have the finished board that we submitted.
It's gonna be a hardy board.
Oh, did I say vinyl? Hardy board, and uh, we submitted the finished plan, schedule, stereo colors. And now to review some of the comments that we had last meeting, which was mostly about uh, the trees. Actually, there was some questions on the lighting along the path. I did reduce it um, to, I don't can't recall how many I removed, but I removed quite a few. And again, they're not gonna be the tall kind. They're gonna be very low profile. So it's really just to create a a lit path. They're not gonna be sort of like a in-your-face lighting. And really, the main, and we did also walk the property, and we decided to add a privacy fence. And if you look at the uh, screen, you'll see the pink line that wraps around. So it'll be a six-foot fence, and when I say privacy, I mean tongue in groove, closed. Um, again, because it's a corner lot, we have two front yards. So the six-foot pr- privacy fence is gonna start right at the edge over here, basically at the uh, corner of the side rear yard right here. So the back will be six feet all the way up again to the front of the house here. And as you turn the corner, will be a three-foot fence here, and also a three-foot fence here with a gate off the driveway and a gate towards the uh, left side over here. So the tree removal, we did uh, go back and decided to salvage, save, I believe. So the tree removal, we did go back and decided to salvage, save, I believe, four trees, mostly along the upper right over here and one closer to the corner of the property towards the dead-end street. We are removing, I believe, eight trees in total at this point. And after looking at the property and walking through it with David, most of these trees, I don't know if you guys looked at it, but they're very, they're not in great condition. They're very thin, and there's only one decent one, which I think is, we're keeping somewhere over here, this one here. But basically, we are removing eight in total. So I believe the letter we received saying that we need to pay into the tree fund. And David asked me a question earlier, and I'm not sure how to answer it, is if we plant trees, do we still have to pay into the fund was the question? So that'll be the end of my presentation, and that'll be the first question I have, and then I'll let you guys ask your questions.
You're muted.
Again, here. You're unmuted.
I was trying to be good and muting. But why don't we start off with answering your question or David's question about that? Valerie, would you be able to describe the the tree compensation plan?
Sure, the the requirement is that they have to replace half the caliber of trees that are coming down. So if you do want to, you can accommodate, you know, and not have to pay into the tree fund if you do plantings on your on your property. And the section of the code, I believe I put in the memo that you would just have to, yeah. So that chapter one eighty-three specifically identifies what's required, and then if you meet those requirements, then you do not have to pay into the tree.
Can you give an example? Let's say there's a total of a hundred diameter inches of tree that are being removed. How many trays with, you know, one-inch diameter would they have to plant?
That's gonna do math, let's thought. So I believe, I believe if it's a hundred, if it's a hundred inches of trees coming down, they have to replace fifty inches of trees.
Can I ask the follow-up question to that Valerie, and thank you for the clarification? So let's say there's a hundred inches of trees that are coming down. What is the the amount that's required to go into the tree fund?
That is based on, there's a, I think it's a hundred and something dollars per caliber inch, and I can get the exact
number. It's one sixty-five per caliber inch. What is it? What is a caliber inch? Is that anything different than a regular inch?
So it's the same thing. It's the caliber, what we're talking about is like a diameter of the tree, so it's, we're calling it caliber inch of the trees that come down versus the caliber inch that get replaced.
Okay, so if a hundred inches comes down, that's, I've got the numbers correct, and it's one sixty-five per caliber inch, which is what I pulled up. It's a sixteen thousand dollar fee that goes into the tree fund?
Yeah.
Sixty-five.
Potentially, yes. If you're, if you're using those numbers.
Basing it on, basing, yeah, basing it on a hundred inches and no replanting.
That's correct.
Okay, so then the the follow-up question to that is, is if it's a hundred inches that are coming down, and so then we replant, let's say twenty-five inches, does that take off? Does that come out of the fee? So let's say, let's say it's a hundred inches coming down, we replace twenty-five inches, which technically is is the requirement of half that's going back up, so then is our fee cut in half or is our fee seventy-five inches now because we're replacing twenty-five inches?
Right, so it'd be based upon whatever's remaining that has not been accommodated for based on the law, and so it's not a one-to-one ratio. It's, I believe, it's a fifty percent ratio.
So if I, so if I replant twenty-five inches, that would account for fifty inches, and then I'd be responsible for fifty inches of fee, which then equates to, in this, for this instance, okay, Donna's shaking her head no, so.
You only have to replace half. So if it's a hundred inches, then you're replacing fifty inches, so the fee, I just did the math with the calculator, not in my head. One sixty-five times fifty is eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I got it. Even the fee is half.
Yes, that's correct. The fee is half.
Yeah, the, yeah, the numbers aren't be exactly right, but the fee is still half. Okay, so same question. So same question. Let's say I replace twenty-five, then I'm responsible to pay into the fee the other twenty-five.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for the clarification. I was trying to figure it out, and I was, I couldn't get, I couldn't match everything up in the from what was written in the account.
By the way, he asked this just before the meeting, so that's why I didn't get to answer him. Just to clarify.
Very true, but but you know, I had some time orders sitting here.
All right, that's so let's see, comments by the consultants?
I did not, I did, the only comments that I submitted were just identifying that they, I did indeed come back and are saving four trees as opposed to the other trees that they were originally proposing to knock down. And those have been identified on the new site plan. Other than that, the application is complete, and they've provided all the outstanding questions that I had.
Okay, comments by the board members?
So I just have a couple of comments. So I'm very pleased that you're saving a few trees. That's really nice. I did want to, as this is an ARB, also, I would like to see what the lights look like. So you have a lot of, you have lights on the front porch and you have lights in the back, so is there a way to to see what the actual fixtures look like? And 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 the fence, because you're gonna, you're proposing a fence, so.
Well, the fixtures, it's a little too premature at this point, but the fence, hold on a second, I know I had it up here because I knew you were gonna ask. So there, it's gonna be like this, a privacy fence, but I don't think we're doing black. I think we're doing dark gray, David, somewhere in that range.
Something that is very natural-looking, something that is.
Black or a dark gray does blend in.
A very, a very earth tone, yeah.
But this is the style, basically, of privacy.
Okay, great, thank you. But then it would be, I would like to see what the light fixtures are.
I think the only problem there, Donna, is, is one, we don't have an electrician. Two, we don't know it's gonna be available a time of purchase to know what the light fixtures are. What we are, what we have gone through and said is that we're not looking to light up the neighborhood. This is a for a walkway to walk into the home. As I've spoken about here, it's a family home, so there's three small children and my wife. My office is here, but I travel often for work, so this is, this is a very common lit for.
Yeah, I mean, we're only providing one wall sconce in the front porch, basically. The rest are recessed lighting here. And then your typical motion sensor lights above the garage door. If the board wants it, when that is selected, I guess we could always provide a sample to you. But again, we're looking at two, two lights over the garage and one wall sconce. The rear, again, they're wall sconces, but they're not facing the street. But if they'd like to see them, again, we haven't even gotten into any of those selections yet. So I don't know.
Is there a concern about the, about the lights that we should be aware of? The last time the concern was it would be lighting up the neighborhood. We came back and said that that's, you know, that's not our, that's not our aim. That doesn't, that's not the goal. The goal is to create courtesy for the family coming in, but are there any other concerns we should be aware of? With, in terms of the lighting?
I don't know, just since I've been on the board, we've always had, like, people give examples of the lights. So.
Good, again, we're looking at one fixture over here, and it's gonna be in keeping with the style of the house. Probably a brushed look, but again, we haven't discussed anything beyond what we're providing.
We're usually mostly concerned with, you know, the lighting effect off the property. Could you show a plan view, just so we can see where the driveway lights would be directed towards? You know, I, I, you know.
Well, again, so the lights are above the garage doors. So usually, there'll be two, two heads, so we're looking at one straight out and probably the other one towards the parking area, and the same with this. So we're lighting really this blue area here. And I believe it's a, it's a sixty.
So that we can see the adjacent properties?
It's a corner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this I don't believe there are houses long here.
So I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try something here. Oh, I turned my video off. Sorry about that. You guys couldn't see me. I can't see, so there's a home on the street that is currently in a, in a very similar style, and they have lights that are a very similar style to what we would look to do. I don't know if y'all can see that or not, but it's a very, like, the lights don't, they should not reach off, the lights will not, will not reach off the property.
Right, I can see, I can see that now with what this plan is, so I'm satisfied about that.
And we can, that can always be a condition of approval as well.
Just sounds good.
And the only time we've had an issue in the past, at the end of the day, we need, we needed to be a soft white, low, low number Kelvin
Right.
on the scale. We don't, we don't want that daylight harsh white operating room.
Anybody wants those, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's plenty of people that are putting them in by mistake.
And by the way, these lights.
Yeah, I think that would be the key, Jim. You're right. You're right, Jim. That that would be the, that would be the trouble, so that that is appreciated that to let us know. That would be, it would be a mistake to do it, so that would be the only way it would happen.
These lights, by the way, I think are sixty-foot clear, they light up to sixty feet max. So at the most, you're looking somewhere in the middle of the street at the most. I mean, they're not gonna be that bright again. We'll provide a cut when the time comes. Again, I think those are the only ones that you would be concerned about lighting the neighborhood. This is just a wall sconce that's gonna light up the entry.
Right, I agree. And what about lighting in the back of the yard?
In the back, it's the same thing. We're only gonna have wall sconces on either side of the sliders. Other than, again, perhaps some, depending what we do with the deck or patio, there might be some post lighting. But again, it's not gonna be floodlights that light up the whole backyard.
Okay, Donna, it looked like you were trying to ask a question.
Hey, no, I, I think what Jim said would be great if that could just get in. That could be a condition.
So below three thousand Kelvin?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point.
Okay. Do you agree to that, David and William? Lighting below three thousand Kelvin?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really think we'll go that high. I think a twenty-seven, twenty-eight is probably where we're.
That's, that's, that would be perfect.
Yeah.
Great. Um, getting back for a second, fencing, could you show us what the the two sections of front fence, I think you said they would, would be three feet high?
Right, so we're looking at
type of fencing?
The whole length here on McCarthy, McCarthy, I don't know why I said this length here, and as it turns towards the house, will be three foot high, because this is considered a front yard here. Actually, it's gonna turn all the way back to around this point because even this is considered part of the front yard. And then on this side, it's gonna be just this section right here.
Six feet.
So the, the six-foot fence is really gonna be an L shape from where my cursor is to the top corner, back to the front of the house here.
Okay.
This rear yard.
And the three-foot fence will be the same type of.
The similar fence, just smaller.
Just small.
Half in height with a gate, basically, again, in, by the parking lot driveway and also on the side yard here. But it is gonna be the same style, just shorter in height.
Sounds good. Are there any other comments by the board?
Like this one here, basically.
I have one. It looks like a lovely house, and I hope you and your family enjoy it.
That's for you, Dave.
Thanks, Carol.
Everything's consistent with the neighborhood. I mean, the only thing, only question I would have is do the consultants have anything that they need in order to put a proper resolution together?
The only thing is, this isn't actually a public hearing.
Kathy, I double-checked with Sandy. It was not a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. Made a little mistake on the agenda, but the agenda that was sent out to the public has it as a public hearing.
Right.
Okay, all right, then forget what I said about that.
Yeah, I sent you back another email, Kathy, to.
Okay, sorry.
Clarification, I was under the impression this is a public hearing.
You're right, you're right.
So so to Jim's point, what would be needed to get a resolution together? I mean, I guess we would close the public hearing?
I, you might wanna take comment.
Yeah, I don't think we asked anymore.
I think you have to open the public hearing.
Public hearing, okay, okay, that, that's where I wasn't sure. So let's, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Any seconds?
I second. Oops.
Right, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yep.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And I do as well, so the public hearing is open, and I would like to ask for any comments from the community. Not hearing any, I'll take the opportunity to ask the board again if there are any further comments.
Do the planting, do the plantings need to be resolved in order to move forward on this?
I can put in a, as a condition that they have to meet the chapter. You know, and as long as they submit information that does need it, then we can move on unless for some reason the board wants to see the planting plan.
I, I'd be happy myself with, you know, anything that meets the the requirements of the town. Donna?
So my question is, is because you're taking out all these trees to have a yard, like you're taking out that forty-foot, forty-inch maple, it seems to me like you're, you're probably not gonna want to do too much planting. Is that correct?
Well, at least not in the middle of the yard, perhaps along the fence line. That's why we're keeping the ones closer to the fence here and here. Depending on David's budget, if we need to add some and reduce it, we may. And if we do, we'll submit. Leave it in Rose, sorry. I didn't see you there.
Sorry.
And then if we do add some, we'll submit a plan, just so you could review it as well, but I don't think we're gonna add any, David?
I think if we could move forward with.
Don, I just wanna show you that tree if you wanna see it before I.
But I did go past it and saw it.
You did? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tree, that forty-inch tree is splitting down.
It's right here.
That's it.
Yeah. So, yeah, the if if we could move forward, that will abide by the code, then we will abide by the code, and we will submit with those with those regulations, the chances that we go in and plant other trees to make up for it, I guess it could happen, but the chances are it's probably you're probably, probably not going that way. You're probably paying to the fund, but I
So that
I can't give that.
You would just make sure that nothing's on the invasive list and, you know, that's in the code, yeah.
Thousand percent. Thousand percent.
Yeah.
Yep. Very much in to providing what's into, very proud of where we live and providing what's here in our area.
Excellent.
Okay, so if, let me ask you, are there any comments from anyone in the community? Anyone online? Regarding this application? I hear none. Any other comments from the board or the consultants? In that case, maybe we could ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We have a resolution before us. Donna, I imagine you maybe haven't had a chance to read the resolution.
I'm guessing not. I don't know what's wrong with my email.
Oh, you, I don't, I don't think, you don't have a resolution before us. You have to direct.
Well, that makes me feel better.
You don't have one before you.
Okay.
What am I looking at here?
Oh. You're looking at the wrong matter.
Resolution to be drawn.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so let's talk about our scheduling then to to act on a resolution or to review it. So Valerie, would you talk about the scheduling changes again?
So you were, you are gonna have a planning board meeting on the twentieth. So you can vote tonight, direct me to print together a resolution for the twentieth.
That sounds good. Does that sound okay to the applicant?
Can you walk me through, I may be a little bit naive to the, what the resolution is that is, is being proposed that we are pushing to the twentieth.
So, vote, well, Kathy, why don't you?
Well, it's, it, what? It's the grant of the, of the application, but it's memorialized in writing. And it has whatever the standard conditions are and specific conditions of this application. And we're just, the board is directing, the consultants prepare the resolution so it can consider voting on it at the next meeting. But I think you got a positive feedback from the board tonight that there shouldn't be concern about which way this is headed.
Typically, I mean, we're saying it's a yes, we're gonna have a formal resolution written up, but we don't need to attend the next meeting for the resolution.
Up to you. That's up to you. Public hearing's closed, so nothing is gonna be submitted further, so just really important to adopt.
Right, I'm just telling.
I would think it would be in your interest to read the decision before it's passed, just to make sure it meets with the understanding.
Right, we could circulate that in advance of the, so, you know, and if you have any issues, you could speak to us about it.
And maybe, just one, I'm sorry, one more question. We've never built a house before. So we have the resolution drawn up, it's proposed on the twentieth. At that point, are we able to move forward and start gaining permits for building?
Yes, you'll have everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if there's nothing further on this application for now. I guess we're.
To make them, do we have?
Motion to continue it.
We have to make a motion to continue and to instruct them to draft a resolution.
Right, okay. Do I hear, is that the motion? No move. Second?
Second.
Second. Oops, sorry. Give it to Jim.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I, I vote yes as well. So we will reconvene on this question on October twentieth and we'll have a resolution to act on. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Take care.
So next item on the agenda is the Armstrong Plumbing and Heating at five ninety-three North State Road. Is the applicant here? See anyone yet? Hello?
Hi, sorry, yeah.
Ah, there we are. Hello, Thomas?
Hello.
So you wanna start us off?
Sure, yeah. Can I share my screen?
Please.
Okay, so we, when we were last in front of this board, you know, we had presented sort of a conceptual plan on what we intended to kind of do moving forward with this. And we we submitted this plan here, which is need this bigger, hold on, there we go. Which is, you know, following through with what we had submitted last time. It is a very similar to plans to what was approved. And really, the biggest change is we removed the retaining wall and are now you know, accomplishing everything just by grading the, everything out. Since, at the last meeting, the planning board expressed a desire for a new landscape plan to reflect the changes, which we provided along with this submission. And one of the concerns was screening of the new parking area from North State Road, which we did provide. We had to provide some additional tree plantings as well, which meets the, the tree replacement provision of the code. And, and, you know, other than that, the plans really haven't changed from what was approved. We provided a lighting plan, which really was the approved lighting plan. It just took into account the fact that there's not the retaining walls anymore and that it's grading. And, and other than that, there are no proposed changes to the approved site plan aside from what I just went over.
Okay, thank you. Valerie, would you like to speak to your memo and this application?
Yeah, I mean, I just had a couple of things to note. I mean, in terms of, I think we got, we narrowed down a lot of, at least from the planning perspective. I don't know if Dan has any other comments. But in terms of landscaping, I did look at the landscaping plan and they did, I, they did select species on, based upon your guidance documents. So all of those are native species and are, were recommended in the native plant resource guide. I'm recommending that as a condition of approval, that the landscape notes be reviewed by a landscape ecologist or arborist and amended as needed. And that, I just wanted to note that the planning board required a three-year maintenance requirement on some recent applications. And this applicant is proposing one year, so you might wanna consider three years to be consistent with prior applications. And those are all my remaining comments.
Thank you. Mr. Kerrigan, how, how would you respond to, to that? We are certainly preferring three-year maintenance agreements on all plantings.
Yeah, I, I can discuss it with the property owner. I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue. And, so, yeah, but, you know, I, I don't, I think that's, that's acceptable.
Okay, great. Let's see. Are there any other comments from the consultants?
Um, we've reviewed the plan. We're satisfied with it. I think the, the final comment we have is the the one catch basin in the corner of the parking lot. Since that's gonna be an item for surface, we request that that structure have a deep sump in it. In, in that, an item for a lot will, will end up having a little more erosion than a, than a paved parking lot. So just to prevent the carryover. I mean, I, I guess, Tom, I guess you got the downstream defender. I guess, do you wanna just rely solely on that or you think another?
What are we calling out now? I think it's a, I believe it's, it's either a twelve or an eighteen inch sump. We can increase that. That's not an issue. If you want twenty-four inches or a little more than that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be prudent. Take it, yeah, why don't you do like twenty-four inches?
Okay.
And then between that and the downstream defender, that should really keep things clean.
Yeah.
Or a way to maintain it anyway.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Is that it for you? Your comments, Dan?
Yeah, that's it. Otherwise, we're good to go.
Okay, great. Kathy?
Now, the next step on this is a public hearing?
I believe so. So we could open the public hearing right now and do I have a motion to do so?
Has this been noticed?
Oh, it has not? Oh, okay.
Has been noticed.
No, it has, it has to be noticed, so.
Okay, so we'll.
Set a public hearing.
During would it be October twentieth then?
So Sandy, I don't know if we would make the.
There wouldn't be enough time.
Not enough time. And we're, I think we're using November third.
As a work session. So public hearing would be November seventeenth.
So it would have to be the seventeenth, right. Okay. Does that sound okay, Tom?
Uh, yes, that, that's okay.
Okay. So November seventeenth, we'll open the public hearing on that and we'll go from there, I guess.
I just, I just wanna make another comment that, you know, part of this was necessitated by the fact that they, we discovered that water main in this area and that's why we had to do this amended site plan. But we should be sure now to record any appropriate easement documentation. So that's now a, a record. So that's something that has to be done as part of this application also. And it could be a condition.
Can we prepare a resolution at this point as well?
Yes.
Yes, I can prepare a draft resolution.
Okay, good. And does that easement need to be described and surveyed?
I mean, it could be a condition of the approval.
Okay.
That they enter into the easement agreement.
Okay. Tom, does that all sound good to you?
That all sounds, yeah, that all sounds fine.
Okay, good. So anything else from the board on this application for tonight?
I have a couple of questions. There's a drain, it's just, I just don't understand it. It's a, it's a, it's a pure question. There's a drain that's on the, the, you know, towards the back of the parking lot that goes into, it looks like that's gonna go directly into the stream. Is that, is that true?
Yeah, so that was added during the, the previous application and the idea was that it would capture any any runoff coming off of the hillside there and get it, which was already going directly into where it is now and get it into that headwall culvert down at the very bottom crossing North State Road so that the treatment practice for the roadway wouldn't get inundated and that could function at its best efficiency.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks for that explanation. Also, are you, cause it's a gravel driveway, is there gonna be like a fence or some kind of, what's gonna stop the gravel from going down the, these slopes that you have?
There's a six inch curb around the, yeah.
Okay, great. Yes, sorry for that.
Nope.
I did have some comments on the planting and that is it just seems like you have an abundance like of, of plants in you know, I've gone, I live close to here, so I've, and I've gone past actually several times recently just to like look over there and see. It just seems like it's so shady where you're gonna be putting like the white spruce and all. So like looking at it the way you have it here is I think it's different than what it is in real life. And I also, just as a personal note, I'm an owner of, or a caretaker of a large oak tree in front of my house. And I, I'm not really sure you wanna have those oak trees right around those parking lots. I think it might be better to have something without missile-like nuts coming down on top of the cars. So that's, that's my comment for you. I also see that you're putting the sign like way back towards the house. I'm wondering so those oak trees that, it seems like you're trying to get enough trees in here that you don't have to pay the tree bank, cause you've got, you've got them really close, like you're showing the red maple as being like, you know, ten, a ten-foot diameter, you know, like a canopy, which it's, it's definitely not gonna be that, it's much bigger. And there is a lot of red maples. I would definitely suggest switching some of those out. But if you put the sign towards the front of the road, which is where people typically have the signs, you would have space on the side towards the dog place right along the road to put in two of those oaks that maybe you would take out from the parking lot and put another species in. Cause it'd be kind of nice to have trees along the road. Would you consider that?
Uh, yes, the sign has actually already been put in place, cause that's, that's part of the complication of this is that, you know, some of this was already built and, and then some of it's, you know, kind of needs to be built. So I can talk to the property owner, see if they, if they wanna move their, their sign. But.
Or if you could plant the tree, so it's not gonna block your sign. I mean, obviously, you don't wanna plant a tree right in front of your sign, so.
Right. And, and the, the other thing can, is that the, the, the proposed, well, it's already actually in place, the, the stormwater system and the existing sewer service are kind of in that area as well. So we don't want, if, if we're gonna put anything in there, we don't want it to be, you know, something.
Right, that's what I was thinking, like more towards, you know, like the, where the trees are in the corner of the property by the dog, you know, towards the dog place.
So, okay, yeah.
If there's a way to put like another tree there and I also, it'd be really great, like, so you have white spruce on the side, which is gonna be completely in shade, which it are just never gonna grow. So it would be, instead of putting those like pencil-shaped evergreens, like along the front of the driveway, the parking lot, because that's also, in my opinion, really unattractive, like, so you're, you're masking the parking lot with unattractive looking, it, it looks like a barricade, like you could put your white spruce. There's probably enough room to put the white spruce as your instead of having it all in the shade and then just have the opaca, the hollies on the, you know, in the shady area, cause they'll take the shade. So I just, I just would look at this landscape plan and on, in the not just based on this property, but by the, by the conditions of the neighboring properties, al- also in the amount of shade that you're getting. So if that would be possible.
I, I'll talk to our landscape architect about this. You know, he's obviously far more qualified than I am to, to comment, but I'll give him these.
Just to have more, not so many red maples and, you know, cause it's just, if, there's just an abundance of red maples in everybody's plan and that just sets you up for disaster, especially with the spotted lanternfly flying into our area. That's one of their favorite foods, so it'd be good to diversify.
Do you have these comments? It, it's sort of in a list form that you could send to me just so that I could forward these over?
Me personally?
Yeah, just, just so I could send to our landscape plan.
I, I would hate to burden Donna with that, but there is a recording being taken of this.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, I can go back and review that then.
And I'll be familiar, like a landscape architect will definitely be familiar with diversifying. It's, it's, it's really something that's like high on everybody's list now. So thank you. I'm excited about seeing this developed.
Yeah, I, I think it'll be an improvement to the, the way the property looks right now. I wrote there the other day myself and it's a little ragamuffin looking with the sixteen cars parked every which way. So this, this will be an improvement. Any other comments from the board?
I forgot one comment. I just wanna thank you so much for taking, for agreeing to take that bamboo out. It's just, it's a really small amount, it's, you know, it's. I forgot one comment. I just want to thank you so much for taking, for agreeing to take that bamboo out. It's just, it's a really small amount is, you know, as far as bamboo goes and, um, but it, it won't be small for long. So, um, uh, thank you for taking it out before it becomes too difficult to take out.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
That's great.
Okay, and, um, Tom, could you send us a, uh, a revised planting as soon as possible so that we could you know, have it in time for the, uh, November 17th?
So, uh, I, I, I'll, I'll try to get it as fast as possible. The, uh, for the November 17th meeting, is it still two weeks beforehand since, or, or is it since the, um, the meeting before is being kind of turned into a work session? Does that change anything as far as the submission date?
Sandy?
No, you could submit, uh, regular time. It's
Okay.
About a week and a half before the meeting.
Okay. I'll try to get it in before then, but yes, uh.
Okay, great. So we're going to notice it for a public hearing. And, uh, we're going to have a resolution drafted and we'll, uh, review the updated, uh, planting plan, uh, on November 17th. Sound good?
Yep.
Kathy, do we need a motion?
So, um, Kathy, uh, you're, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Motion to set the public hearing for November 17th.
So.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Great. Uh, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well to setting the public meeting for the 17th, the public hearing. Okay, um.
Are we asking them to write a resolution or, or not?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have to.
Resolution.
So we have to vote on that?
So, um, I don't think to draft the resolution. We don't need, uh.
I don't think you need to formally vote on that.
Perfect.
Okay. And if, uh, everything looks good in the 17th, then we can act on, on the resolution at that time. Okay, uh, if there are no further comments, then, uh, thank you, uh, Tom. Um, appreciate your, uh, your coming tonight and your responses. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, um, next up is, uh, River Knoll. And here, I see you. Hello, Glenn.
Hi, guys.
So, uh, Kenny, and, um, I believe we, uh, are here to acknowledge receipt of the, uh, supplemental environmental impact statement that we received, uh, from you.
Right.
And, uh, Kathy, do we need to, um, to make a, a formal acknowledgement of that, like with a motion?
No.
No. Okay. So, consider it received. Thank you very much. Um, so we are thinking about, um, uh, dedicating November 3rd as a working, uh, work session to have you present the, uh, S D I S and, uh, for us to review it or, uh, give an initial review, uh, to see what might be missing, uh, you know, just to look for completeness and that sort of thing. Uh, Valerie and Kathy, is, is, is that correct? And, and please, uh, chime in to, uh,
So I think it'll be less of a presentation from Glenn. He's, you know, as opposed to more of a work session for this board to review the um, S D I S and to, it's, and we're reviewing it for completeness. So really completeness is basically, you have the, the scope itself basically is the outline of which, the, the content that should be in the S D I S. And so we'll be reviewing it to confirm that the content is there in the S D I S. There will be another phase which will, once this, once this board deems the S D I S complete, it will go out for public comment. At that point, the board can also provide additional questions or comments associated with the F C I S. So for example, you want more information or you have, uh, subsequent questions associated with some of the information that was provided to you, that would be part of, you know, your response to the S D I S. And then the applicant would have to provide responses to those questions in with the final environmental impact statement. So the first step is actually seeing if all the information is there. And if not, we have to identify what information is still missing before it's ready to go out for public review. And we have 45 days in which to do that, which is why we're suggesting to have the, uh, work session on November 3rd for the board.
Question, um, Valerie, if I remember correctly, uh, you had previously supplied us some memo with respect to some issues, um, with the E I S, um, completeness previously?
No, that was the scoping document. So, right. So the scoping document was amended and that was accepted. I haven't issued any, um, any memos at this point in time for the L C I S.
Then, all right, um, I guess I had gone back. This is where the missing emails became relevant. I had gone back to look for that, that document, just to kind of refresh my recollection as to what was going on. Um, and, and couldn't find, couldn't get to it. So, um,
We'll send that out.
We could recirculate.
Yeah.
The accepted scope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, because that's really, that's the analysis that's going on. We're looking at document.
In, in lawyer talk, I need to refresh my recollection. So.
Gareth, I have a summary, uh, presentation if you'd like. Um, we can wait till November, but I thought it would be good to give an overview of the plan and the architecture.
I mean, I, I, I think it's best to have a working session of the board to determine completeness and, and the presentation should really hold off until we determine that and it's set down for public hearing.
Okay, uh, I will follow, uh, Kathy's advice on that. So we'll hold off on that summary. Thank you though, Glenn, for, for offering it.
Okay.
And, um, so members of the board have physical copies of this. Um, Sandy, can you tell me, uh, is, is there a physical copy in the public library now that is available to the?
No, it's not, it's not available to the, this is really, this is completeness. So it's not until, until this board deems the document to be complete, then it will go out to the public because there are still some changes that might take place in the document based upon our completeness review.
Okay, okay. Uh, that sounds, uh, good. Um, there any other comments by the, uh, uh, consultants on this? Kathy, Valerie? Any comments by the board? Hearing none. Nope. Okay. Uh, so hearing none, I, I guess we, uh, reconvene to, uh, to carry out that completeness analysis on November 3rd and, um, that, uh, should be open to the public to listen in on. Uh, am I correct there?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, uh, and, uh, if you were interested, uh, in this project, please do make sure to, uh, to tune in. Uh, that will presumably be by Zoom, but I haven't heard that for sure. Uh, Sandy, do you know if we're still going to be on, in Zoom time?
I believe we're going to be in Zoom till January.
Till January. Okay.
Yes.
That makes it easy.
Till January 15th.
Okay, great. So, um, so for those interested, we'll see you back on Zoom, uh, on the, uh, November 3rd. Um, is there anything else on, on this matter that we need to, uh, discuss or do? Kathy, Valerie?
No.
I don't have anything now.
Okay. Uh, if there are no other, uh, comments then from the board either? Um, I, I think, uh, you say thank you, Glenn, and we'll see you on November 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Uh, so moving on, we have a, an item, uh, where we'd like to review a draft resolution for 540 North State Road. And somewhere of that. There we go. So, um, Kathy or Valerie, you want to take us through this?
I'm sure I can take you through. Hold on, let me try to pull it up. I apologize. Okay, so, um, this one's a shorter resolution. So, um, again, the first few paragraphs just sort of identify that, um, the location of the project. This project was a type two, um, action under seeker. So no further environmental review was required. Um, it just acknowledges that you, uh, conducted a public hearing opening on August 18th, closing on September 1st. And, uh, it identifies the particular plans that the board, uh, looked at for their review. Um, and it also acknowledges that you did review, um, consultant letters as well as public comment. And then the planning board's determination specifically focuses on the, um, you're acknowledging the standards and, and the proposal is consistent with those standards of section 250 of the Town Zoning Code. Um, and also in accordance with section 250 that you find that the application takes into account public health, safety and welfare. And that you looked at other things concerning traffic access, walkway, circulation and parking. Um, the board also determined that the proposal is consistent with the standard set forth in the wetlands water course and water body protection chapter. And that the project falls within the wetland buffer area and that the applicant is proposing water quality and water quantity, stormwater management with the installation of wet valve and storm clean filtration insert catch basin. Number two, as a mitigation measure. And then also in accordance with section 250 that you find that, oh, that's a repeat. So I'm going to propose removing that. Um, paragraph. So now for there, therefore be resolved, the planning board determines that you, um, that based upon the findings of the application for site plan amendment as well as wetland permit is granted. Um, the approved plan just lists the actual plans themselves that the planning board is referring to. Um, the conditions, the specific conditions, uh, deal with the, first of all, the fencing, that the fence will be a pine dog-eared picket fence. That was what was approved last meeting. Um, also that the applicant receives all their other approvals. Um, and also that they answer, I mean, address to the full satisfaction of the town engineer, outstanding stormwater engineering issues raised. And then as a condition of approval that they have to submit the final, uh, plans complying with all requirements and conditions of the resolution. And that the applicant will pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board review of this application. The force in effect is, and field changes are typical to, um, your code, which, um, identifies the process in which the conditions have to be met. And then the field changes allow for certain field changes to take place within the, um, within the field as needed based upon what is, um, based upon the project. Uh, landscaping, all landscaping on the approved plan shall be installed. This one also has first, second and third year of installation and that the individual species that do not survive beyond the first, second or third year shall be replaced at the beginning of the next growing season. Um, commencing work, uh, no work can be commenced, um, without first the building inspector to ensure that all permits have been issued. Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the building inspector will inform the board of the applicant's request of the applicant. I mean, so that the board can review, um, what's there on site. And the issuance of final, um, certificate of occupancy will be, um, only issued upon full completion of everything that's required as part of the site development approval process. And the expiration of the site plan will take place if conditions, um, required to be fulfilled prior to signing the site plans by the cha, chairman are not fulfilled within one year of the date of the adoption of the site plan approval. And all required improvements are not maintained. Um, bona fide application for building permit or certificate of occupancy is not made within one year of the date of the endorsement of the site plans. And then all required improvements are substantially completed within two years of the date of endorsement of the site plans by the chan, planning board chairman.
Hey, uh, do I hear any comments from, um, applicants on, uh, sorry, from, uh, consultants on this, Dan?
Okay, there I am. Um, yeah, just, uh, we'll do, let's do our final review, but otherwise the last revision satisfied the, uh, the technical comments we had previously.
Okay. Kathy?
No comments.
Okay, uh, the board.
I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Uh, Valerie, uh, as you were reading it, you said you were going to eliminate, uh, some area that was, uh, repeated. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, I think there was a, a, a sentence, uh, whereas that was repeated.
Oh, okay. I, I couldn't find it as we were going. So, all right, that'll be taken out.
I, it's possible that it might have been my, uh, my computer too, as I was scrolling through it. So, but I'll just double check.
Yeah. All right, uh, so, um, if, uh, I, I guess, uh, we're, i- if there are no further comments on this, then we're, we're pretty much good to go with it, uh, on the 17th. Is that right?
You could, you could vote on it tonight.
Oh, we can vote on it tonight? Okay, um, so I thought of, okay. Yeah, okay, that, that would be wonderful. Do I have a motion to, uh, to adopt a resolution as well?
So move.
One second.
Okay.
And, uh, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, um, they, I guess the applicants who are apparently not on, online, um, will be notified, uh, that this has been approved. And, and that's, that's, uh, that completes our interaction with this project. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Um, so let's see, um, you, uh, was a statement that, um, the E A C, uh, wanted to be read. Um, and is there a, is there a representative of the E A C online now?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. Uh, so, uh, you'd like to read this, uh, in and get it into the record, uh, word for word? Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Um, uh, you can start whenever you'd like and, and please give your, your name and, and, uh, E A C affiliation, uh, uh, to start. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Chairman and Board Members. I'm Marilyn Owens. And I am a member of the Town of Austin E A C and I am of the, uh, liaison for the Planning Board. On behalf of the Town of Austin's, uh, Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, the following statement is being read so that it can be incorporated into tonight's minutes. Uh, it's a very brief statement, so it won't take long. The statement reads as follows. In light of recent storms, including but not limited to Hurricane Ida on September 1st, 2021, and our projected intensity, duration, frequency, I D F, rainfall increases, the E A C will like to recommend to the planning board that the town's storm water management regulations be updated to include the most recent to include the most recent 100-year storm projections. It is further recommended that projects both pending in the public hearing process and future projects with the town incorporate such updated storm metrics to plan and safeguard developments in our community against future flooding. And that concludes the statement. Thank you for the opportunity to read it into the minutes.
Thank you very much for doing so. Uh, are there any comments, uh, from, from the board to that statement?
Well, my comment would be that I, I, I would, I did hear the new governor say that she wanted those standards updated, um, because, uh, you know, Austin wasn't the only one that experienced flooding, um, and there was certainly a lot of tragedy associated with it, so, um, hopefully she can get something going because she's on the state level, because I, I do believe, um, this needs to be updated. We had, you know, six and a half inches rain followed a week after we had four and a half inches of rain. So it's just, it's, uh, this rains, it never used to rain like this consistently. It'd be like a one-off and it's not a one-off anymore, so I do hope, um, I don't know how else we can get that changed, but hopefully they can do it on the state level if anybody knows how to, uh, expedite it, that would be great, because I do think, um, our lower lying residents, particularly in the Village of Austin and in Briar Cliff, um, are, have the potential to be impacted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in my understanding, uh, the metric that we would like to make sure is always the updated metric is the, uh, the inch, the inches of rain that constitutes 100-year storm, is that correct? So if, if now it's, uh, you say a, a nine-inch, Dan?
Yes.
So a nine-inch now constitutes 100-inch, 100-year storm, that's what, nine inches in a 24-hour period?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the, so the storm we had was probably about a 24-hour duration, even a little less, and was less than that. Um, you know, I, uh, we spoke about this earlier and our code references, uh, the DEC Storm Order Design Manual. Um, so if the state should opt to change the, uh, the storm runoff numbers associated with different storm events, uh, our code would automatically follow.
And do I remember you, from your comments earlier, that they do periodically, uh, monitor that and, and make changes?
Yeah, if, if data, you know, that, you know, because remember, you know, even an event like that, um, you know, if you follow the, the weather, you saw that, um, some places got more rain than others. So, you know, do you, you know, for us to try and, uh, you know, take that one data point and sort of change everything, I, I really defer to the state and their technical experts to do that. But to the, the, the overall goal of being able to, uh, handle, uh, storms of a greater intensity, if that's appropriate, uh, the DEC will do that. But to reiterate that, um, you know, if the point is to increase the runoff for the 100-year storm in light of, uh, the runoff with Hurricane Ida, uh, it did not exceed the 100-year storm. I mean, it was, it was intense, uh, and again, even, you know, the, the distribution of the rainfall is always going to change with events. So when we're designing these things, we really need to, um, follow the acceptable guidelines and if the guidelines change, then, uh, our reviews will change accordingly.
Dan, if I could add, I, I know in talking to, uh, some of the, the people at the county, that one of the problems with this storm was not so much that we got, you know, more inches per, you know, um, than we would in a 24-hour period for 100-year storm. It's just that so much came down it so fast. Um, and, and that's, and that's something they have to take a look at.
Well, I mean, the, the other thing you have to keep in mind is that as far as the planning board's obligation, what we do is we try to, to guarantee that the projects we approve, uh, don't have, don't increase the, the peak runoff rates. Right? That, that's really our role. And that's not to say that throughout Westchester County, there's underlying, uh, issues. Um, you know, we all know, you know, the Bronx River Parkway, the Hutch, there's all places that flood out and it's because those streams, um, can handle, you know, sometimes one-year storms. Um, so, you know, whether it be the, the rivers that, that these areas are tributary to or some of the localized drainage systems, um, a lot of these things flood very frequently. But keep in mind, there's underlying, uh, you know, defects, if you want to call it, in our, in our infrastructure to carry stormwater away. Our, our task here is, is to make sure we, we don't make things worse. And in some cases, we might have an opportunity to, um, to reduce flows above and beyond.
Right, we were, I was just talking about something similar to this today because people tend to forget that a lot of the older homes actually contribute a lot to stormwater runoff because there is no stormwater, you know, uh, management systems in older homes. It's all the newer stuff that actually has those types of elements built into it. So, you know, at times everyone always thinks about the new development, but there's a lot of existing, you know, buildings that have nothing but just sheet runoff. And that's it.
And it's not just buildings, I mean, you have large parking areas from older commercial centers, you have highway, interstate, I, you know, all these things, you know, stormwater wasn't a thing when they were built.
Right.
Um, so, you know, would the, the, you know, would the Sawmill River Parkway not flood out as much if the Sawmill River Parkway didn't exist? Uh, but it, but it's there and, um, the Sawmill River can't always handle these storms and the, the levels come up. But there are things, you know, in, in terms of resiliency, um, we do have the maps that, um, that FEMA publishes. In some places, they do detailed hydraulic modeling. And in doing that, we can find areas where existing, uh, conveyances are inadequate to convey, you know, they don't get into local drainage, but they get into some of the bigger culverts, uh, that can convey runoff. And, uh, you know, that's what they look at. And then from that information, what you can glean out of that is, you know, there may be culverts, um, that, you know, should be increased. I mean, for example, one of the things, um, maybe it's not a great example, but, you know, one of the things was, um, North State Road had a real chronic flooding problem for many years. Um, and I guess, I don't know, it was probably about eight years ago, the town, um, did a project behind where Coral Sea pools are. And what we, what we learned was, um, that the pipes under there were severely collapsed. So there was a restriction, you know, not that the pipes were too small, but they, somewhere along the lines, they were damaged. So, you know, it's a mixed bag of what the planning board can do, but there's also, um, existing infrastructure that can probably use improvements. Um, you know, and that, and that's the sort of thing we've got to look at. And separate apart, um, you know, from the, the, the type of hydrology that we get into, FEMA has their own thing they do in preparing the flood maps where they actually look at, um, different storm events, but to look at the actual hydraulics of the, uh, stream channels to see what they can convey. So, um, the framework is there, um, to do these things. And perhaps if, you know, some infrastructure money, uh, finds its way into, into our, uh, budget in the town, uh, perhaps there are projects we can target, uh, to, um, to both, uh, mitigate flooding, but also to provide some, uh, best management practices to also do some, uh, some stormwater treatment.
Hmm.
And did they ever take into consideration that the soil saturation, like, this is, um, because I, I've been recording with a rain meter, like, how much rain we're getting this year and it's been, it's been like, it's one rainstorm after the other, so maybe they weren't, there were a couple, three-inch and then a four-and-a-half-inch. And then you get the six-and-a-half-inch, there's like, there's no place for the water to go.
In the stormwater calculations, they do consider the soil characteristics and their ability to, uh, absorb runoff. But there, there's so many variables. I mean, for example, one of the things that can be brutal, and it isn't even a time of year you would think of it, but, um, sometimes during the winter, um, you have like an ice cover. And it's solid ice, so it rains, now everything is completely impervious. The water hits it and everything runs off. So even though the, the, you know, the hurricane, uh, tends to be the, the, the meteorological event that causes this, you can get an ice storm, uh, followed by a lot of rain that can have equal consequences in terms of, uh, overburning our, our drainage ways. And when you really get into the big storms, the other thing that sort of never gets figured on, but really plays a big role in some of the catastrophic failures is when you get rainfall of an intensity like we had, uh, what it tends to do is move stuff. So if you're on a road, you get an intense runoff like that, twigs in the, the, in the, in the, in the, you know, in wooded areas, leaves, they clog, they clog the catch basins. Now all of a sudden that catch basin is no longer functioning as designed. Likewise, there's, um, like, sometimes like if you have a culvert, say for example, they put in two pipes side by side, maybe decide, let's put in two 24-inch pipes. Well, guess what happens? You get a storm like that, particularly with some of these, um, channels that run through wooded areas, you get a storm, all the branches and leaves are all on the move. And what happens is they get jammed up between the two pipes. Uh, and you can do all the calculations you want and say those two pipes should handle the storm. But when you get an intensity like we got the other night, that stuff blocks the inlets and now all of a sudden you don't have the capacity you thought you had and the water's going over the road. So there's a lot of calamity that goes along with, uh, an intense runoff there. So we, you know, we can bang on all these different theoretical scenarios, but, you know, there, there are a lot of other factors um, that play into the result of, of, you know, the aftermath of these various storm events.
So, um, it would be, if I were to summarize your, your initial comments, it seems that the, um, the request from the EAC, uh, is essentially already being done because we are following all of the new recommended metrics from the state. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and if you go to the Storm Order Design Manual, they have maps of New York State and they show you what the runoff is. It's not the same in every region. You know, it almost looks like a topographic map. You have ISO, um, runoff lines. So as you go further upstate, it's not as bad because they, they don't get hurricanes.
Hmm.
You know, so it's, it's sort of a different, uh, situation.
Okay.
But, but again, it's like for us to say, to, to say we're gonna decide what the right storm to design for is, is, is really kind of beyond the scope what one municipality should be doing. I, I really feel, um, that I would, I would defer to the experts at the DEC and, and agencies like NOAA that where they get this data and when it's all compiled, if they tell me the 100-year storm's no longer nine inches, then, you know, I suppose it goes the opposite way. I suppose you go out west, they may say, well, the 100-year storm used to be this and now it's two inches less. So, so it's a moving target and, and there's government agencies that keep track of this stuff and, um, will advise us what the, the appropriate methods are to design for.
Let me, let me ask a question. Um, is there a community by community, um, or are there differences, community by community, how, uh, what storm level they, uh, designed toward as a matter of their local regulations, or does everyone design?
Well, the, um, the state, you know, like you've seen the, you know, the, what we, when we, what we're doing, we're, we're acting as what's called an MS4. Um, municipal, municipal storm sewer agency, right? So we're, we're covered under a general permit with the state, so we have certain obligations, uh, to enforce, um, the general permit. So, so the way it trickles down is that the DEC has what's called a general storm order permit and that's issued by the EPA. So they can in turn, like say in the case of, um, the application we just saw tonight. So they prevent, they prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan following the, the New York State General Permit, which in turn ties into the, the Storm Order Design Manual and the runoff numbers associated with that. Uh, as an MS4, our obligation is to review that document and attest to the fact that it was prepared in compliance with that, um, design manual. So what we do then is, well, technically I'm not the stormwater officer, but as a participating community, I would advise John Hamilton, who's the stormwater officer, to sign a document that's called the SWIP acceptance form. So what the, this applicant, then we'll, we'll stick with Rinaldi or whatever you want to call the chocolate sky. So with their SWIP, they prepare a notice of, what's called a notice of intent, which basically, um, is a detailed form, goes through, you know, all the, the different criteria they used in their design. Um, and now it used to be on paper, but now it's an online thing. So they fill that out and then they take the SWIP acceptance form that we as a, as an MS4 municipality, uh, prepared and then that gets uploaded. And once that goes up, if there's no objection from the DC, I think it's, um, I want to say it's five days, five business days after that goes up, then technically they have coverage under the general permit and they could start working on their project. But one of the other obligations we have is an MS4 and all the other municipalities have, the DEC request that we adopt, essentially they've put a model ordinance out there and in most municipalities have some variation of it. Uh, but ultimately what it does is it pulls you back to, um, that general permit. Because that's, ultimately that's where we're all operating on the, is the, the general permit that the DEC has with the EPA. So, I mean, there's a, a regulatory infrastructure in place, uh, that ensures we, you know, we, we all are sort of uniformly reviewing these things. Uh, but also to, to what started this whole conversation, tho- those design criteria will change if, if all the agencies that follow all this stuff conclude that, um, we're using the wrong numbers.
So, um, understood all that, um, let me ask, uh, another question out of curiosity. Um, regardless of whether it would be, um, advisable or desirable to do so, is a community, um, uh, allowed to, uh, to have their regulations require a more stringent, um, uh, stormwater, uh, you know, review or requirement? Uh, for instance, um, could, could a, a town like Austin say we were going to require that people design their stormwater systems to the 150-year storm? And since it's more than, you know, required by the state, uh, would we be allowed to do that? So as long as it's more than, than they require, I would think it would be okay. Now, it, as I said, irregardless of whether we want to do something like that ever, would we be allowed to do something like that?
Well, I mean, I, I would think within the framework of the state regulations, they probably wouldn't object to it. Um, but given there's such a, um, first of all, uh, you know, we're supposed to be following, I, I guess I'd have to look back at our local law to see if it considers it. But then the other thing is depending upon a project, would a, would an applicant decide that we've gone rogue and decide to sue us over it? I don't, you know, I don't know.
Well, and I think, and I think one of the things that people forget is that these stormwater systems, so when we talk about trying to so when we talk about trying to preserve trees and stuff, the larger the stormwater system you create, the more that kind of you know, tree removal, you know, you know, physical disturbance of land takes place, because these these systems have to be vague, right? If you change it from a hundred-year storm to two hundred to a five-hundred-year storm, they start becoming much more massive.
They have their own impact.
Yes, they do.
But that's interesting.
But I but I think that, you know, if we do, we didn't want to go down that path, we we'd have to in some way document why we think Austin is different, you know, than if we're gonna use, because I don't even know if a hundred and fifty-year storm is even something they compute. It usually jumps from a hundred-year or five-hundred-year. Um but I I suppose you could figure it out, but I I I mean, we had, we, you know, we've had a lot of ba- you know, bad storms over the years, but, you know, keep in mind, the hundred-year storm is nine inches. Um that hasn't happened in recent history. I mean, I don't even think, you know, we've had other types of events like, you know, and they're different. Like, for example, Sandy was really more of a windstorm. So there was a whole nother thing that happened in that the wind-driven tides had typically been a a Long, a Long Island Sound phenomenon, that the winds tended to, you know, the winds tended to blow the, you know, the tide up onto the shore on Long Island Sound. And Sandy, um they redid the maps, FEMA redid their flood maps, because all of a sudden, um it happened on the Hudson River. There was flooding in areas where it was never experienced before. So, you know, so I think the, you know, the 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 issue that initiated this conversation, um if the 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 regulatory agencies see an event that changes their mind, um they're gonna, they're gonna uh change the regulations accordingly. The FEMA issued new flood maps after uh after Sandy. A lot of, a lot of stuff happened um that never happened before. I mean, if you go back before that, I think was it, I think it probably around two thousand, yeah, probably around two thousand, uh Floyd, Floyd was a big rain event. Um.
It's fourteen. Yeah, no, Floyd. So, so the reason I'm continuing to pursue this question is because, so this uh, you know, last week or two weeks ago, it was only a six-inch storm locally. But we got quite severe flooding down on Water Street. Um, you know, really affected the Marina down there, and um Sing Sing Kill overflowed uh all the roads, you know, all the roads were closed. Uh it was, it was pretty bad down there. So our local conditions are such that uh we get semi-disastrous conditions at less than a hundred-year storm. So that's why I'm wondering whether or not, you know, it would be within our purview legally to to change what we design towards or what we require, um, you know, design uh.
I think you would have to do, not only do you have to do like a legal study on that, you would have to do a whole feasibility study of what the pros and cons would be for changing that. Because like I said, you really are gonna have to look at what would be required then in terms of stormwater for um the best management practices. I mean, because I know I'm, I actually work on a couple of sites that, and one project I'm working on right now, that, you know, people brought up of redesign to the five-hundred-year storm, and they can't fit it on their site. Right, to design the five-hundred-year storm. So these are things you would have to take a look at in the typical, you know, residential home, you know? And how that would affect that, you know, those types of applications.
Yeah, uh one point, like, could we, as a community, though, and it seems to be something like with the comprehensive plan, do other things, like when we have, like the subdivision where you have all these houses, can there be um a requirement that their gutters drain into like a vegetated area of their prop- like a, like a rain garden? Example, um so we do.
But I think, and I, and those are all good ideas, but the thing is, again, it all goes back to the engineering of it. You know, you could do that, but how how much would it be, you know, like, that's the thing with rain gardens or those rain barrels. They they only sustain up to a certain amount, and then it becomes a problem. So like, everything would have to be engineered. And so I think it's, I think that's why we rely on this New York State DEC, because they're doing those studies, they're looking at the consequences of the different stormwater management practices. If the town were have to do it, I mean, this would have to be like a town board initiative. But the town would, I would say, would think have to do a real feasibility study as to which stormwater practices you'd want to institute and because if not, then you're pushing all that extra cost into the to the property owner or the developer. And then it goes back to that same conversation we had earlier tonight, then how much more do you put into the development costs? And then, then they're gonna have to sale, sell that, you know, particular building or unit for much higher to recoup all these. So it's it's this balancing act.
From my perspective, I would hate to go uh, go at it alone. You know, for the town to adopt some standard that's different than the DEC. But again, if you're gonna do it, it has to be a town-wide initiative, like Valerie said, that there's some basis for what we're for the, for making it more onerous to develop here essentially.
But to to your point, Donna, part of what they gotta do, DEC, in the Stormwater Design Manual, uh one of the things that applicants have to analyze is what's called runoff reduction. So things such as rain gardens and infiltrators provide runoff reduction. So in the case, even though they have one centralized um facility for the the road and some of the homes, some of the homes do have infiltrators. So that, so they would have had to demonstrate that they met the the runoff reduction criteria. So uh I I guess to, I mean, a lot of what I'm hearing that people want to see, uh to some extent, it's already in there. It's it's already covered. And um it's some, you know, well-thought-out things. I mean, you know, the other, the other thing we didn't talk about um is water quality, and they they came up with a method uh where they have to treat what's called the ninetieth percentile storm. So that ninety percent of the storm events uh will be completely treated by the practice that they install. Um so there's, you know, so the 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 SWIPS have a lot of stuff in there right now. And again, we got to differentiate between what's reasonable for applicants to do in terms of mitigating their own impact versus um things like, you know, Gareth, you brought up um Sing Sing Kill. I I think some of the problems there go back to what I talked about earlier. I think the the culverts under the Metro North right of way aren't big enough. You know, it's, you know, maybe Metro North wants to make them bigger. You know, there there were even concerns too that um that uh when the Ginsburg project went in, that they were kind of pinching the uh the available cross-section of um Sing Sing Kill after it got across Metro North. Um so things like that, the hydraulics of streams and, you know, you know, even like, you know, I mean, I know you're, you like the the concept of daylighting. I think to some extent, what they did on the Sawmill River um provided some benefits in terms of the stream hydraulics. I I can't swear to that, but I, but I think that was part of the mix.
I mean, also, as you mentioned earlier, one of the problems is, you know, older homes and old, I mean, they're they're grandfathered in, they don't deal with their own water, and all of a sudden, you know, um yeah, neighboring properties that, you know, can't, can't, even if they are built to ours, to the stand, to new, the newer standards, they can't deal with, you know, extreme runoff coming off of a property that has no, you know, um water um management uh and, you know, included in it, so.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think a lot of the, you know, the stories and the the news clips we saw after Ida uh are more indicative of our existing infrastructure and its inadequacies, because a lot of these, you know, stormwater management wasn't a thing. You know, it's it's really, you know, come into prominence over the past, you know, twenty years or so, but uh uh it had and always been an essential part of um of development. You know, it, you know, the, I remember times when we used to worry about the slopes of the road and the sewers and the water, and it's like now that's really taking a backseat to the the focus we put on on stormwater. Stormwater seems to, you know, in any major subdivision uh seems to become the 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 main talking point and the main focus. The other stuff's pretty easy to figure out. The uh, the stormwater sometimes can be a challenge.
So uh with that.
I need to, I need to ask the board one question, uh sort of a aside. Um so the the EIS for Rinaldi, I forgot to ask it when we were talking about it. Um it has a traffic study associated with it, and since um since I've started with this board, we haven't had to do, undertake a traffic analysis or review of a traffic analysis. So um did you want, I I do have somebody in my firm that can do traffic reviews, so I can send it to them, or does this board prefer me to send the traffic analysis to another um firm or person?
For what we're gonna be talking about at the work session, but.
So ultimately, the the traffic, there is a traffic study that needs to be reviewed by somebody other than myself, and I think Dan doesn't, Dan does some traffic analysis, but not that, right? Not that kind of detail.
I'm okay having it from your, someone from your company.
Okay.
Uh, your your guy is an expert in traffic analysis?
Well, any, any traffic engineer always gets told they're not an expert from the public, so no matter what. Um but yes, he does do traffic analyses on many, many projects.
Okay, that's an important point, because especially with this particular application, you know, the the traffic um potential traffic impacts being one of the two main uh concerns by the uh community.
Right.
And the community has attacked the uh, the analysis provided by the applicant. So, you know, we it, we, we want to make sure we have a uh a very thorough review.
Right, so we, you know, again, you have, you have a couple of different options, right? So I have, you know, there's somebody in my, like, again, there's somebody in my firm that does that. If you're looking for somebody very, very local, you know, there are a couple other like go-to traffic engineers, so it really just depends on what you think this particular application requires. You know, because I know traffic was controversial in the past, and that's why I wanted to sort of talk to this board and get your sense of what you prefer.
Well, my sense is we, you know, get uh, you know, if you're recommending uh the person in in your firm, I I'm fine with that. I I know your firm uh is, you know, highly uh, you know, highly competent.
Right, I, it, no, and it's just really just a matter of, because my, the person at my firm, he, he actually works out of our Long Island office. Um I also know that Westchester County sometimes tends to be a little bit sensitive um with like, you know, the Long Island-Westchester type of situation, not necessarily this board, but I'm just in terms of like how the public would view things. And uh and then also, um so that's why I just wanted to kind of have this conversation with the with this board, because we can, you know, if for some reason you felt that you really wanted somebody local for this particular project, I can also bring in somebody more local, so that's really up to you.
That is a good point. Um I don't, I don't know, I guess uh if if the 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 level of analysis is equal.
It's equal, no matter, I mean, the bottom line is, the the analysis, it's it's a pretty straightforward traffic analysis, I mean, to truth be told. But I understand this is a very controversial project, and so that's why I wanted to get your thoughts.
About the local people that you might uh bring in, who who?
Well, there is somebody, his name is John Canning, from, um he works for Himalayan Horn, and he does a lot of traffic reviews. Um there's also uh Phil Greeley, he does a lot of traffic, you know, these are very common names in the Westchester community. Um.
One who lives near, actually nearby?
Well, I don't know where Phil lives. I know uh where John lives, he was in Irvington. So he does live on our river town.
Phil actually lives in Yorktown, the office, I think is um
Okay.
in Hawthorne.
Someone's in, some of, one of them is in Hawthorne, you say?
Yeah, it it used to be John Collins Engineering, but they they got bought out by um, they got bought out by, I forget. Um drawing a blank, but they got bought out.
Uh Mazer, Mazer, and then I think they just got bought out again. There's lots of buying out. It's like hospitals.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I might be going back on my initial thought. It it might be better to have a a local uh person uh for just the, you know, those considerations of uh uh, you know, the controversy being uh, you know, keep controlling the controversy.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we can do that if that's what you prefer, and then I can reach out to, you know, I can start off with, I'm already working with John Cannon on another project, so I can start with him, and then if for some reason he's not able to do it, we can go to Phil. Does that work for everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Saying that it's, that everyone's using the same method, so it's, we're gonna, it's pretty much the same, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's the same, right, it's right, it just really is just in terms of I'm just trying to look at it from the perspective of, you know, the, it was already an issue last time, and especially with Route one thirty-four. So whether you have somebody that's a little bit more familiar with Westchester versus somebody coming in from a little bit more of the outside area, whether the public will feel more comfortable one way or the other.
I I think the, the the local is probably a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but if I remember correctly, the the numbers were relatively consistent between the information we received on Parth Knoll and uh and River Knoll. Do we know who did those two calculations on those two projects, and does it matter if it's the same, same person that we're talking about?
Uh I can take a look. Um who did, who did the Parth Knolls one, if you want? And if it was somebody, and if it was, and if the developer hired one of the two that we're talking about, we'll just go with the other one. So that way, it's a fresh face, but yeah, somebody that's familiar with Westchester.
Okay, yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Okay.
All right. Um so I I was um just starting to thank Marilyn for uh for for reading the EAC statement, and it led to a lot of really good discussion. Uh so uh, thank you for that, and it's now a part of the record.
For what we just sat there.
Say it again?
We should get a continuing ed credit for what we just sat there.
That was actually very informative. I do, I agree. I think we should get a continuing ed credit. I learned a lot.
Very good.
Kudos to Dan and to Valerie.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, all right, so we we did have two minute uh, the minutes of two meetings that we were going to review, but I haven't seen them yet, because they didn't show up in my email because of the the email problems. So uh should we just put that off to, should it be number fifteen, or should we do it at the work session? What do you think, Valerie?
Oh, it doesn't matter. I mean, you could just put it off to the twentieth. Yeah.
Oh, the twentieth, oh, we can just do it on the twentieth.
Next meeting is a normal meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I was jumping ahead, so the twentieth, very good. Um, all right, good. So uh with that, uh if there's.
Yes, I'm sorry, sorry to do this. Could we have a very, could we move into executive session to discuss litigation? Very brief, and and then adjourn directly from the executive session?
Uh do I have a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
Uh Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, uh so um so move. Um so we can.
Uh there's still a few people here from the public.
Right, so, you, members of the public for coming tonight. Uh we are going to uh go into executive session. Uh and uh we're gonna have to ask you to um to sign off at this point. We hope to see you at the next meeting on the twentieth. And there's a Carter and a Steve still on. And um they might just have left their computers idle. Can can you bump them, Sandy?
Yes, I think I can bump them somehow, hold on.
Good night, Carter and Steve.
And stop recording too.
Right. We're still waiting for Carter to, to disappear. There it goes.